The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
We'll call the regular council meeting of July 15th, 2024 to order. First of all, under Presentations this evening, we have none. Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Councillor Wallezer, seconded by Councillor Vroba, ready for the question. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on June 24th, 24? Thank you. Councillor Sernic, seconded by Councillor Ford, ready for the question. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Original Communications, Delegations, and Petitions, we have from the Ministry of Government Relations, the TAPD 2024-25 Funding. So this year, they're happy to let us know that we got $85,525. So this has to do for our transit assistance for people with disabilities. And I think City Clerk, we're buying, or I guess we've already purchased a new transit van this year, haven't we?
Right.
So that'll be going to help with that. And it does work off of the 2024 ridership figures. That will be going toward the 2526 Operating Grant and so on. So the Ministry of Government Relations will forward the necessary application for your use later this year. The final date for submitting a capital funding application is April 1st of each year with approvals announced in May or June. So could we have a motion, please, to accept that correspondence? Thank you. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Sernic, ready for the question. All in favor? Carried. Next, we have a letter from the RM of Estevan for Corridor Speed Limits. Now, they've made this resolution, and they would like a corresponding motion from our council. This is Speed Limit Estevan Corridors from Jason La Bla, the Reeve. The council approved writing a letter of support to lobby the provincial government to increase the speed limit on three corridors coming into the city of Estevan. The first being Highway 47 North from Township Road 25 to the bypass. The next one, Highway 39 from the Way Scales to Nelson Motors. That's the second one. And Highway 39 from Range Road 2080 to Service Equipment. So I know Minister Carr will be coming to, I believe, our September council meeting, so we can ask her about that at that time. But the RM would like us to make a motion corresponding with theirs so we could lobby the provincial government to increase the speed limit on those given corridors. Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just curious what, how much they're asking the speed limit to increase? It's not listed.
They didn't. I guess they'd like it increased somewhat. Right now, as you know, it's 80 on the one coming from the Way Scales, where the bypass joins on to 39. It's 80 from there until it drops down to 70 just before, I think it's around John Deere by Kentucky Fried Chicken, where it drops to 70. Then when you come up the hill, of course, it's 50 once you hit the speed limit.
Yeah. I'm just curious if they're asking for a 10% speed increase, or 15, or 20.
Yeah, I'm thinking they're probably looking at 90 to 100K from 80. Probably the ministry will have rationale, number one, why they're not willing to change it, or if they are willing to change it incrementally. But I guess we'll see what Minister Carr says. But I guess what we're, what she's asking here, or what the Reeve and the RM of Estevan is asking, that we agree with them by making a similar motion and then forward that to the ministry and have Minister Carr come back. So we've got Councillor Wallezer, and then Councillor Frank, and then Councillor Clark.
Your Worship, would this not be an appropriate item to go towards the Southeast Transportation Planning Committee instead? I know other communities have asked for traffic counts or accident information through that group instead, rather than going straight to the province?
Yeah, I think, and I can stand, be stood corrected, but Councillor Clark, I think you're more on road repair of all of the different highways, not speed limits, are you? Your group?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'll just jump. Do you want me to just answer that? Certainly, part of ours is on the safety of the roads and stuff like that. What I was going to suggest is that if we agree that it should be increased, that it, that we could pass that motion, and then it would, could be forwarded to Southeast Transportation. But what will happen there is they will probably do a traffic study and that, to see if that is warranted. So I think if we are in agreement, then that could be part of it, that would get forwarded to the Southeast Transportation.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that would make sense if we agree to support the RM of Estevan. Then we can send this to Councillor Clark's group as well as the ministry, the provincial ministry. Councillor, not Travis, Councillor Frank.
We've broken you, that, Your Worship. Broken you. Thanks, Your Worship. Only I managed to have a few conversations about this with some residents and have had some, some people say they prefer it the way it is, some people say they would like to see it changed. So I'd be okay with putting a letter together, but I would like, I was kind of wondering if council would support this, where our recommendation would be, or our motion would be a letter to support lobbying the province to review it, not so much necessarily increase it, just making sure that wording is there. I think there's probably a lot of conversation that should happen with a lot of residents, and I don't want to just full on say I'm in favor of increasing it, but I'd happily, I'd be happy to have the province and, as well as the city and RM, have a little bit of collaboration and review on that and look into it anyway, so.
Okay, so you would be willing to make that motion?
Yeah, I would make the motion that we would support, sorry, how does he have this word? That we would send a letter of support to lobby the province to review the speed limit on those three corridors.
To the ministry, and we'll send a copy to Councillor Clark's group as well. Okay? Any other questions, comments? Saying none, have we got a seconder for that? Okay, thank you. Councillor Sernic, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have the Creighton Lodge Minutes of February 8th, March 8th, and April 18th. Could we have a motion, please, for those? Thank you. Councillor Frank, seconded by Councillor Wallezer. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. Saying none, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Written Reports of Committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the Minutes of June 18th. Could we have a motion, please, for those? Thank you. Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Sernic, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from the City Clerk, the Surveillance Policy. We're upgrading that, number 2024-86. City Clerk, anything you'd like to say on this, aside from updating our policy?
Thank you, Your Worship. The policy kind of speaks for itself. It is just to identify that there is surveillance cameras and that we're open and transparent with that procedure.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you for your efforts on this. Go ahead, Councillor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship. To City Clerk, because the police station is a city facility, and they kind of do their own surveillance with various, you know, things in their facility, should we put in here that the police station is its own entity and have, they maybe have their own policy? Or how does that work?
Thank you, Councillor Ford. We actually have separate access to information bylaws and separate entities. When you want to access something, you have to go directly to the city or directly to the police. You can't do it intermixed, and we don't cross any of our paths in that jurisdiction.
Yeah, we're separate jurisdictions, so if the police wanted a picture of something that happened at City Hall, they would have to request it, as we would of the police on where they surveil.
No, and I understand that, but I'm saying the police have their own security cameras, so this does not apply to that city facility. So should we not put it in, put it in this document stating that the police have their own stuff going on, that this policy does not apply to that facility?
What's your thought, City Clerk?
Maybe I'm not asking this properly.
Would this policy not apply? I mean, even though they have their own jurisdiction, they would probably follow this as well.
No.
No?
No. They have their own policies and procedures, and they maintain their own facility.
Okay, never mind. I'm not asking that properly.
So separate and distinct. So what were you thinking, Councillor Ford?
That's what I would like put in this policy.
That this will be separate from the police?
Correct, that the police have their own surveillance policy.
So it's not confused?
Correct.
Okay, well, if you like.
Which I've confused everybody now.
If you like, City Clerk, could we maybe do that? We could put that in there, that this shall, this document shall be separate and distinct from the EPS document? We could do that, if you like. Okay, Councillor Wallezer, then Councillor Frank.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two questions. One, does build on Councillor Ford's concern, if an incident were to occur at the fire hall, another city-owned building, does that fall under this policy?
They would fall under our jurisdiction, correct, City Clerk? Yeah.
I do think.
It's just the police are separate and distinct.
Identifying that for people, so that if they are worried about surveillance or how to access footage of themselves, they know by looking at this policy where to access it. My other question is, when we identify the privacy officer for the city of Estevan in this document, who currently holds that title in the organization?
That would be the City Clerk.
Thank you.
Now, having said that, the requests go through the city manager, but the City Clerk and the city manager, right, review it? No? Okay, City Clerk.
Sorry, Your Worship, the privacy of, access to privacy of information goes directly to me, and the privacy officer.
Okay, directly to City Clerk. Okay? So we've got that clarified, and I think, Councillor Frank, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just following up on Councillor Ford's, is, do any of our policies apply to the police? Is that kind of what you're sort of inferring? So we, so, I mean, I, either way, a sentence isn't going to hurt anything, so I can, I support either option of Councillor Ford to be happy, but I think that was a little bit of what I was kind of understanding through that, is that if none, if none of our policies actually apply to the police, we wouldn't necessarily need that. But it doesn't hurt either, so that, just to make sure there's no confusion, so.
Yeah, and I think, I think, Councillor Frank, that was the point, because although the police board, you know, their employee is the chief of police, the chief then manages the day-to-day operations of the police, so the police board, which is made up of city council and a couple members at large, can set the policy. The day-to-day is done by the chief of police, whom the board, by the way, also, the police board hire. So yeah, I think we've made that distinction. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship, and just to add to that, and I just wanted to make it clear to the community, because this policy does say city facilities. The police station is a city facility, so I just want people to know that that facility is separate from this policy.
Yes, it's true. Even though it is a city facility, because the police on the jurisdictional side, they have control over their own policies. Correct. Okay? Did that answer all the questions, I hope? Okay, did we get a motion out that, City Clerk? We didn't? Could we have a motion to accept that policy, please? Thank you, Councillor Ford. And we'll make them changes, if you like. Seconded by Councillor Clark, thank you, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have from the Water Services Manager, the Potable Water Fill Station. Now, City Manager, you want to speak to this?
Thank you, Your Worship. So this report was prepared by the previous water treatment plant manager, Shane Buksis. He's no longer with the city, but we do have the new water treatment plant manager, Matt Angel, here to discuss as we move forward. So this was part of the RM liaison meeting request, that the, as the report states, that the large trucks that fill water are crossing an older bridge in the RM area, and that if we could find a solution to move the water fill station into the city limit, so that the large trucks do not need to cross the bridge, it'd be beneficial for the RM and potentially us as well. So there is an option here to move it over to behind SRI on the service road. The reason this is coming to council right now is that we would need a budget adjustment for up to $50,000. Matt is currently looking at some existing building structures there, so that we could potentially reduce those amounts and put it in an existing building, in the lift station there, so we didn't need to make a new structure for heating, but we're reviewing all the options right now. So that's what the report's kind of asking, is just for the budget adjustment, to move this forward, based from the RM liaison meeting.
Okay, thank you, City Manager. Matt, would you like to come sit down and hit the mic on, in case council has any questions of you? And yeah, this is something we've been talking about for a number of years. It makes total sense. And although that bridge won't be fixed immediately, they're still working, the RM is working with the province. They'd like to put in a heavy-duty culvert, which, once in place, would be done for a long, long time, but they haven't got concurrence from the province yet, so while they work on that, which, again, we don't know the timeframe, it could be a while, this would be the best, it would be a win-win for both us and the RM. Councillor Wallezer.
Thank you, Your Worship. My question is, what is the risk if this is deferred to the November budget?
Well, if it's deferred to the November budget, it won't happen till next year. So I guess with the shape that the bridge is in now, it would be better if we could do it this year, but I guess if we had to leave it till next year, it wouldn't be the end of the world. That would be up to council. Okay, Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just from that meeting, I know they are concerned about the bridge, and some of the stuff that if they start lowering the limits on there would affect us with the, some of the chemicals we haul in and different things is there. So I think we're trying to work with them to say, well, if, if we can take some of this other load off that, you know, maybe we can keep that, you know, keep that pathway to there, and we'll still be able to use it, but we don't want them to put a limit on that bridge. And then we'll have to work around that to get a lot of stuff in.
Yeah, that's a good point, Councillor Clark. Once the province gets involved and puts restrictions on that, then it negatively impacts us as well. And I know, for example, the chlorine we haul over there, they come in these massive heavy-duty, because of course chlorine is a poison, and these heavy-duty tanks, which are quite heavy, so it could get quite on earth. Any other questions? Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. Do we have a proposed timeline on how long this transfer would take? Like, how long would it take to switch stations over?
To put this in place?
Yeah.
Perhaps, Matt, would you want to take a shot at that?
Thank you, Your Worship. Councillor Ford, we're actually looking into two different options of, so depending on which option we go with, depend, it will depend on the timeline. The building that the previous manager had proposed would probably take upwards of a month to do, where, what we're looking at now for tying into a pre-existing building would probably take upwards of maybe two weeks-ish.
Yeah, and I think that was a good idea, Matt, that, you know, your group, yourself, came up with, and it would solve a lot of issues, shorten the timeline and the cost. So I think that's probably a good option. Councillor Sernic.
Thank you, Your Worship. Now, from this fill station, we're actually selling this water, right?
That's correct.
So it's a return, it's a $50,000 investment, but we're going to get it back.
That's correct.
So, okay. I would make the motion to approve it.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a seconder? Okay, Councillor Clark, any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Councillor Wallezer.
Thank you, Your Worship. If there's concern that this road to the water treatment plant could be inaccessible moving forward, do we have a plan for a secondary access? Should the province open the road to do repairs, or if the weight limit does drop?
Well, the good thing, if the weight limit does drop with this motion, if, if agreed to by council, we will only have very light traffic going across there, because the issue has been in the past, especially with the semis going across there was a concern. So now, by having them coming into the turnout at SRI home with the, with their, they have a big loop there, so, number one, it's better with the bigger trucks to come in there, they have more room, because right now, actually, they come in right beside the water treatment plant, so I don't know how good that is with that aging building and aging foundation. So it will be a win-win. But if they do lighten the load with us having this in place, there wouldn't be an issue, but if they do lighten the load and we don't have this in place, it could be an issue.
My concern is not about people filling water. My concern's about us accessing the water treatment plant. Do we have a secondary access to the water treatment plant for our own purposes?
If they block that access, Matt, I guess we do, don't we? Yeah.
Thanks, Your Worship. Yeah, we do have a secondary road that goes in there with another bridge. I think the bridge that they're talking about taking out and putting a culvert in is the one that heads to the west, and the bridge that they're going to reduce the total weight on would be the one that heads north and south to the water plant. So we'd still have an access to the road, and if they put the culvert in, we'd be able to bring in some of our chemicals through that way, because it wouldn't have as, as big of a restriction on it. So yes, we would have a secondary, as long as it gets through, approved through the province.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Councillor Wallezer. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Oh, opposed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let it be noted, City Clerk, that Councillor Wallezer is opposed. Okay, next, under Executive Reports, we have the Water Quality Report for June of 24. Matt, any issues on that? They all look very good. Ever since we switched to Rafferty, it's a great improvement, right? Councillor Vroba, you have a question? Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. Matt, if you could just touch on the fact that there was a smell in the water, I know I had a few people that were concerned about it, and I did express it was still safe, but if you could just speak a little bit about that?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. So, Council Vroba, we've definitely had quite a few phone calls on the taste and odor, and basically what it is, is when the algae in Rafferty starts to grow, it has like kind of a turnover. I've asked many questions about why this happens, but it happens all across the province. So I've contacted Water Security Agency, this happens every China, they're currently under the same problem as us. Theirs normally lasts all summer long, where ours kind of diminishes after a few weeks, so we're looking at, hopefully, just a couple weeks. Currently, we're flushing our raw water line from Rafferty to the water plant, just to try and help get the water moving a little more, and hopefully get any chance of oxidation happening in the line to kind of get it out, so.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Vroba. So moving ahead, under Executive Reports. Oh, sorry, Councillor Ford had a question. Go ahead.
Thanks, Your Worship. I think we were pretty spoiled with Boundary Dam, because when the water came from Boundary Dam, the water was constantly circulating, so that algae didn't have a chance to grow. But I did have a number of questions and/or concerns from the community that we don't ever, you know, post our water testing results and everything else, and these meetings are, in fact, the place where these testing results get posted, if there's any issues. So just a reminder to the public, if you do want to see those water testing results, they are in our council packages every, every month.
Absolutely. Good point. Thank you. Did we get a motion for the water? Okay, could we get a motion for the water quality? Thank you, Councillor Ford, seconded by Councillor Frank. Any further questions or comments? Saying none, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under Executive Reports, we have from Land Development. I think you're off the hook, Matt. Thank you. From Land Development, the proposed daycare zoning, 1507, 1509, Willack Road. Richard, anything you wanted to add to that? We'll give first reading to that bylaw this evening. Anything you wanted to flesh out there?
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, if council is prepared to go ahead with this rezoning on this project, everything's stated in there, and I'm here to answer any questions anyone may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Vroba.
We just need to go back. I don't think we did the building permit report, or go forward after. I just.
The what? Oh, okay. Sorry, did I miss that? Okay, we can go back. I'm sorry, I did miss that. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the building report? Thank you, Councillor Vroba, for June. There you go. Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Vroba. There we go. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Now, Land Development, proposed daycare zoning. Go ahead, Richard. I think you've given your comments. Any questions or comments from members of council? Councillor Sernic.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just to confirm, once we pass the first reading, then it goes out to the public, and everybody can have their say at that time, correct? That's all we, just needed to clarify that.
Exactly, right. It's advertised for two weeks. Good point, yeah.
Okay.
And we sorely need a daycare, for sure. Councillor Frank, then Councillor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. And I just wanted to confirm, these are the three lots closest to the water.
That little water.
Reservoir station there.
Yeah.
So kind of the least desirable of any of those lots, anyway, so that's, that's kind of the perfect place for, least desirable for a home, so this is perfect placing with that, because I think anybody living in that area would love to have a daycare really that close.
Exactly. No, so true, especially across the road from the proposed, or new proposed building. Go ahead, Councillor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. When it goes out to the public, will there be a design, what it will tentatively look like at that time, or will it just be that we're going to consolidate the lots and something will get built on it?
Thank you, Your Worship, and the councillor. We do, we did receive this morning a concept design for the external part of the building that can be included. Generally, with the rezoning, all we would say is provide a map, like what's on the bylaw that's in front of you, showing these are the three lots to go from this district to this other district. We definitely can add that in. We don't have the information yet at this point to submit to the public a development permit that'll have to be referred to as well, because a daycare is discretionary use in that district. But yes, it wouldn't conflict with anything to, as long as I made it very clear, this is a conceptual design, because between now and when the building permit's applied for, things could change. The design we have, it's the external part of the building, it does include parking lot, doesn't include landscaping or anything like that at this point.
Yeah, it's initial development right now, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions or comments? Saying none, then I guess we can move forward for first reading of bylaw 2024-2085, zoning to amend, 2022-2061, daycare Willack Road. This is first reading, and will be, our public will be given the opportunity for two weeks to study, go over it, and send any questions in to Richard, and then through Richard to council. So a bylaw of the city of Estevan to amend zoning bylaw 2021-2061, being a bylaw of the city of Estevan to regulate the use of land and location of buildings and other structures in the city of Estevan, whereas the city has received an application to amend bylaw 2022-2061 to allow for the construction and operation of a commercial daycare on undeveloped lands legally described as lots 1A through 3A, Block 139, Plan 102, 371, 060. And whereas it's been proposed, a parcel be designated under the zoning bylaw to zoning district that can accommodate a commercial daycare. And whereas notice of the proposed amendment has been issued directly to affected landowners and has been advertised in the Estevan Mercury, a newspaper published and circulating within the city of Estevan for two consecutive weeks. Okay, so, do we have a motion for first reading? Thank you, Councillor Wallezer. Seconded by Councillor Ford, thank you, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Under Public Hearings and Reports, this evening, we have none. Giving notice this evening, we have none. Motions from committee, none. Consideration of bylaws, none. Inquiries, Councillor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I had one inquiry regarding the Churchill Play Park. There's a lot of positive feedback coming out of there, and the one inquiry about the paddling pool was a question why it wasn't open every Saturday, due to the fact of how paddling pool was a question why it wasn't open every Saturday, due to the fact of how much money we put into that park. So I just informed them that our paddling pools are actually opened every Saturday, we do have one, and it's just done on a rotating basis, and it's actually been done like that since my son, who's 25, was little, going to those paddling park pools. It would be great if one day, maybe, we could have some of them open every weekend, but I believe it's also a staffing issue, trying to get enough lifeguards, so, you know, maybe one day we can get them, but at least now, everyone is enjoying them. The other thing is, last meeting, we had, I had a question from a resident regarding the wetlands by the cemetery, it was north of the cemetery road on the west side, and so I had replied back with one of the answers being that the dirt that's being stored there is temporary, so, but her response was, a quarter to a third of the wetland is basically what's left now, from its original size over the last few years. So her concern is was just whether or not the dirt that's there being put on a temporary basis is ever actually going to be removed, or where eventually will that whole entire wetland just go away.
Well, it was a slough, and, and the idea was to fill the slough in.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's, we just wanted, she just, we're just curious if that was the intent, and maybe I didn't explain exactly where we were looking at, because the response I had gotten was that it was just a temporary spot.
From my understanding, city manager, we were filling that low spot to make it more usable. I didn't know we were going to dig that back out.
So we may, I may, I may have just not really, that's why I say the north side to the west of that road, just if we could look into that, just so I could give her a more firm answer on that, because there is piles of dirt, so it might be two different areas that we're looking at, too, because she also used the word slough, what it used to be, and they're filling it in.
Yeah.
But it is also a wetland, which, you know, we've got all of the animals and everything that are enjoying that area, so I just think her concern is just what our, what our intent is for that area.
Okay, well, we can flesh that out, city manager.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Clark?
Thanks, your worship. I, I had a call after the, the windstorm, where a person had a lot of trees, and they had to haul them branches and that to the landfill, and there was a charge for doing that. When there is a big event like that, do we have any way to maybe say that that could be waived for that weekend, but, or is that just part of the, how we do the service now? I know at one time, there used to be, if you were hauling just organic, it didn't charge, but now we charge, I think, for everything.
I believe, city manager, we do, except for the weekends.
Yeah, it's, thank you, your worship, Councilor Clark. We, we have done a user pay there during events like that, some people would obviously have many more trees than other areas, so we have not generally done that, but if it's something council would like to put into place, I guess we'd need to have some parameters on what size of storm triggers that, would be kind of the issue, but if it's something blatant, maybe it could be a designation from council during winds over a certain amount, could, we could waive fees for, would it? I guess we just need to identify a timeline.
Thank you. I, I think it'd also probably be a budget issue that probably would want to know how much that would cost if we did that, or that, but it was just a concern, and I just, I wasn't sure whether it was, we'd ever done that before or not, but.
Yeah, it's probably not a bad idea, Councilor Clark, if, if we have a severe storm event, that during the, the next intervening week or so, that we would allow the discount, or maybe even free, for branches and trees, but again, you would then have to designate, and this will probably fall to the new council, what does that mean? What's a severe storm event? Is it over half an inch? Is it over 80K? Is it over 100K? So those parameters would have to be put in place, but that's probably a fair thing to look at for the new council. Okay, Councilor Wallyser?
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. Aside from some of the water calls that I received, just an update to the community, the U-13 softball provincials were hosted in Estevan this past weekend, so there was 21 teams in our community, and everyone that came up to us over the weekend had nothing but good things to say about the community, the state of our parks, the state of our, you know, splash areas, the paddling pools, everything, so it's just a big hats off to the city for the very good job that everybody's done on the parks and everything in our community. Our softball diamonds now have a new name, it's been officially announced, so the girls' softball diamonds are now the Jody Wallashin Diamonds, and then softball then also unveiled two diamond, new, new diamond names, named after Earl Minchin and Don Schroeder, for all their exceptional work in the community over the years, and for girls' softball.
Awesome, well, thank you, Councilor Ford, for attending and for bringing greetings on my behalf, thank you for that, and thank you for your work that you've done there, appreciate it.
And then just one more, Minor Baseball is hosting provincials this weekend, and they're still looking for volunteers for this weekend and next weekend. They're having two different baseball events, which is going to bring another 20, 30 teams each weekend, and they're still looking for volunteers. If anybody's interested, they can go on Minor Baseball's Facebook page.
Okay, thank you for that, and we encourage people to volunteer. Again, it's a backbone of our community, and it brings a lot of monies to our community, and we appreciate the people that do volunteer, and we need them to keep helping out. Councilor Sternek?
Nothing to add, your worship.
Thank you. Councilor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Just a reminder that Service Valley Theater is on now, with Grease is our current musical, that's on all the rest this week, and tickets are still available, but they're selling really fast, which is really good, so it's been huge reviews, rave reviews, it's been a great, a great time and a lot of fun musical and comedy, and then we have another musical comedy coming up in August, Jailhouse Rock, so tickets are available online for that as well, or at Henderson Drugs, and then we also have the Cash Family towards the end of the month, so lots of great, lots of great entertainment going on down there, so.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilor Frank, and most of us were able to attend the opening night of Grease, and it was absolutely fantastic, and we encourage people to attend, it's a really good performance.
Absolutely, and yes, if you attended and you enjoyed it, please tell your friends, because that's the best way tickets have sold for us, so.
Absolutely, thank you. City manager?
Nothing to add, your worship.
Okay, thank you, city clerk?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, city treasurer?
Nothing, your worship.
Okay, city clerk, we have something coming up this Saturday, correct? Isn't that a street dance?
A street dance.
A street dance, yes, that'll be very exciting, at the Affinity Place parking lot, and I don't know, we haven't seen a lot of advertising on it. Usually, it's a very big hit. I'm not sure who's looking at, after the promotions, but, you know, it's important that maybe we put in a plug here, that usually it's a fantastic event, and of course, of the, because of the work being done downtown, we'll be moving it this year to the Leisure Services parking lot, but it should still be a great event. I'm not sure, city manager, what the acts are, but I'm sure they will be good. I know we had the Romantics, I think, was it last year? They were really good. Councilor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I just pulled it up online quickly. It's Lisa Mowen that will be performing this weekend, and $30 are tickets in advance at Henderson Drugs, and $40 at the gate, and I think they're looking for volunteers as well.
Okay, great, for the volunteers, please help us out, and for the people looking to a good time, hopefully they could attend. Thank you for that. Okay, having said all that, if we have nothing else, do we have a motion, please, to move